All right, we call a roll.
Berkowitz.
Yes.
Jaskowitz.
Yes.
Kaplan.
Yes.
Harik.
Yes.
Ready.
Yes.
Willand.
Yes. Okay. The resolution has been passed. We'll do it formally after the attorney draws it up on paper. In about two weeks, we'll vote on it.
Okay.
And you'll be able to get the copy and go for your permits.
Okay. Thank you.
Good luck. Okay, next case is Gregory Frank, 37 DeWell Drive. Severe variance saw six foot high fence.
Sir, if you could raise your right hand, you swear firm testimony about to give before the board's true self you got.
I do.
And for the record, you're Gregory Frank, and you're the owner of 37 DeWell Drive.
Yes.
Thank you. You're sworn, Mr. Chairman. The witness is sworn.
All right. Mr. Frank, tell us about what you want to do and why.
So we're looking to put up a fence around our backyard and side yard. We have two small children, two and a half year old and a four month old. Right now, there's no way to keep them in the backyard. So when we go out to play, they run, go to the street, run in the front yard. Not very safe. So we wanted to put the fence up. We're looking to put a privacy fence up along the three side along the back. And then we wanted to try to come out a little bit further on the side where our garage is to give some extra space for our kids to be able to play because we don't have a lot of grass area on that side of the yard.
Right, so is that extension into the front yard eight feet or 18?
Eighteen.
Who drew the width of fences?
I did, yes.
It's a little out of scale. You've got 22 feet from the front of your garage over to Orleans Road. And where you drew that fence clearly isn't the majority of the 22 feet. I mean, if you, if that's the area that you want, I think we can adjust the numbers. Is that the space you want to fence in?
Yes, the 18 feet out from.
Well, that's not what it's showing. What you're showing is just a small encroachment into the front yard. If you went 18 feet, you'd cover almost that entire area. That's why I'm questioning the way it was.
Okay, we definitely don't want to go the entire area. There's a good deal of space beyond where.
I'm looking at the, I'm looking at the plan that was submitted with your application. There's a fence drawn on that plan. And you can see a little dotted line cutting through the area that you want to fence. That's the front yard setback. And you extend beyond that, not very much. But you, what you've drawn and 18 feet don't, don't connect.
What, what, what does it show that, what do you estimate that he drew so that the board?
I mean, if he says he wants the way he shows it on his plan, then we can guesstimate what that encroachment is into the front yard.
Yeah, can you, because he may.
About five feet.
So he would amend the application for five feet.
I think you'd reference this document. Reference the survey, the date of it, and the drawing, if the board's comfortable what he's doing. And we don't have to get into dimensions.
Mr. Frank, do you understand the point?
Yeah, I, I do understand.
Okay. You're, you're in agreement with this?
Yeah, I.
What you drew is what you want.
What I drew is what I want, yes, sir.
Thank you.
Okay. Is there sidewalks on Orleans?
No.
His spacing address though is DeWell Drive, right?
No, but he's got, but that Orleans is the, is the front yard that he's encroaching.
Yeah, there's no sidewalk on my side of the street. There is one on the opposite side of the street.
Is there a curb?
There is a curb.
No, I'm just, I think of how your, your property line relates to the curb line because sometimes they're not the same. What is that crosshatch, the area next to, is that a patio in the back?
16 by 16.
That, that's a, it's a, like a great room. It's a glass.
It exists.
Yes, it exists.
Okay.
And these variances are just for the fence.
Fence.
They're not even for the.
No, must have been before sometime.
Yeah, this is a very old survey.
What about the fact that it's six foot high?
Six foot solid.
We didn't get that yet.
Oh, okay.
You want to bring that up?
All right.
Generally, this board doesn't allow six foot fences. Usually it was five foot with a lattice.
Four foot solid with.
Four foot solid with a one foot lattice, which would be five feet.
Which would be fine for what you want to keep your young kids in. Okay, so would that, is that for the whole fence or just the part where we're looking?
The part that you're going to the front yard. Part that faces the street.
Okay, so we could do four foot with a lattice on top?
Yeah.
Making a total of five.
Four foot, okay.
Yeah, and you're allowed six feet on the, on the other sections if you want to do that.
Yeah.
You may not need six feet.
That would be fine.
Okay, and then the solid, the solid part, we don't have any problem with?
No.
Okay, got it. Why do we have allowed 50% seat through there? This is not proposed on the front yard.
The, the, I think we just discussed would be solid, would be lattice. Yeah, it doesn't affect that, it doesn't affect any kind of site problem.
But on the back, he doesn't have to have.
No.
It's just that front yard.
Exactly.
Front yard, four foot five inch. It's just a.
Four plus one.
Yep.
Okay. So I could do six around the other parts and then the part going into the front, four foot plus one.
Yes.
Okay. Now, what, sorry, what about the part in the back along DeWell?
That's outside the front yard.
That is, okay.
See that little curb line in there? That's the front yards of that.
So you drew the whole survey here? This is not official survey, right?
The survey is official. I drew the lines.
That's making the survey unofficial. Got it, okay.
It's a survey of a previous owner anyway.
Yeah, it's an old, yeah.
Okay.
Anybody have anything else? Anybody want to speak in favor of or opposed to this application? Seeing none, I'll ask if somebody wants to make a statement on.
I think it's the minimus in nature, the fact that you want to just keep your kids safe and you're agreeing to the changes we asked. I'm going to be voting for it.
Okay, and you have a resolution for proposal?
I can do it. An application 2128, Gregory Frank, 37 DeWell Drive, block 749, lot 2, in the R2 zone. I recommend that we grant the C variance to install a four foot high with one foot lattice solid, well, fence contrary to section 430-11 A and B.
Second ready.
Okay, and call a roll.
Berkowitz.
Yes.
Jaskowitz.
Yes.
Kaplan.
Yes.
Harik.
Yes.
Ready.
Yes.
Willand.
Yes. All right, two weeks, we'll formally pass the resolution and then go get a copy of it and get your permit.
Thank you very much.
Good luck. Okay, next case we have is Maura Mick, 6 Up Seakin Road. Nobody here?
Weird.
You haven't heard from her?
Yeah, I don't know what's going on. Haven't heard from them.
Is this going to shed? She wants to legalize.
Says already there, huh?
Apparently not.
Is there anyone here for that application? Anyone from the audience?
Nope.
Do we want to carry it to our next meeting just for an announcement of when this application will be heard? So she doesn't have to notice again?
Uh, yeah, I have no problem with that. There's nobody else here.
Yeah, we'll carry it.
To carry it, uh, July 28.
What do you want to do in the application?
We, we can just come up with a date or you don't, or you don't have a date for us?
Uh, I'm working on possible special meetings that I had spoke about.
Any chance she shows up at 7:30 and should we just carry it to the 7:30? Right?
Yeah.
And then from there, we could maybe carry it to.
Yeah.
Otherwise, we're going to put her on, um.
Well, considering it's 7:28.
The world's shortest carrier for two minutes.
Not sure.
Just me, put the next meeting in.
We could put her on October 20th. That's my.
All right, why do I have a motion to put this on for October 20th?
So, Mr. Chairman, I'm just going to ask question point of order here. I mean, this looks like an incredibly the minis, the minimus.
I don't know if we can, I don't know if we can grant an application with any, with any testimony.
Based on the, um, the proofs submitted, but there are no questions.
But what, what the applicant doesn't want there?
Well, it is a.
Are we really allowed to pass something without any testimony? Your, your testimony, your proofs would be what was submitted in the application.
It's a sworn application. It was.
Okay, right. You would take what was written on that piece of paper as the truth and testimony.
Okay.
Basically, it says here.
This is the minimum, minimum, nothing.
Huh? Not a good idea. Okay. Carry. How you work that?
We are.
I agree.
I know.
You've got two sheds.
So what are we doing?
Carry, you don't have to carry.
7:30.
Have a motion to carry this to 7:30.
On the 20th?
So, more. Second, second ready.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Maura Mick is on October 20th.
October 20th.
October 20th?
All right, adjourn that meeting.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, call a order of the 7:30 meeting.
Yeah, hold on one moment.
Announcement is made that adequate notice of this meeting has been given that is being conducted in accordance with NJSA 10 colon 4 dash 6 at sec of the New Jersey Open Public Meeting Act. Please call a roll.
Jaskowitz.
Here.
Kaplan.
Here.
Harik.
Here.
Ready.
Yes.
Willand.
Here.
Berkowitz.
Here.
We also have with us our board attorney, Mr. King, and our board planner, Mr. Chatley.
President. Uh, since we've already done the pledge allegiance thing, we can skip that.
You want to open the meeting? Anyone in the town?
Uh, at this point, I'll open the meeting to anybody from the general public who wants to, uh, talk about anything that's not on tonight's agenda. Seeing nobody, I'm closing the public meeting. Uh, we have one piece of correspondence, which if I can find, I'll read. Involving, uh.
The application is for signing at the Blue Foundry Bank.
Blue Foundry Bank?
Yes.
7 Sylvan Way?
Correct.
Okay. I have a letter from the attorney, Chris Murphy. Uh, firm represents Blue Foundry Bank in connection with the above referenced application. While we currently scheduled to present our application to the zoning board on July 14th, we receive a request that our application be adjourned and all notices be carried to the board September 29th, 2021 hearing. In addition, Blue Foundry grants all required statute of limitations on extensions up to September 29th hearing date. Lori, you okay with September 29th?
Yes, I gave him that date.
Okay, well, I don't know if he picked it himself. Can I have a motion granting that request?
So, more, second Jaskowitz.
All in favor?
Aye, aye.
Any opposed? No, okay. So, I'm going to put on. That goes there. Okay. Next, we have resolutions. I guess we could, we could do, we could do all the Cs, right? Together?
Yep.
And we can just do the D by itself. So.
But Mr. Kaplan and Mr. Berkowitz and Mr. Potts cannot vote on those, right? So that, okay, and I reckon he's not here.
Do we have enough?
You, what, two or three?
So we have, we have, Jack?
Is that two?
Yeah, we have three, so.
That's fine, we're good. Okay, good, all right. We're good.
This is up in front of you now.
All right, so if somebody wants to make motion to accept, uh, resolutions for applications 2120, 2124, 2030, and 2109.
So, more. Second Jaskowitz.
Call a roll on that, Lori?
Mm-hmm. Uh, Jaskowitz.
Yes.
Harik.
Yes.
Ready.
Yes.
Willand.
Yes.
Okay, then we have, then we have, uh, application 20 colon 18. Somebody want to move that application? Or a resolution, I should say.
So, more.
Second.
Who, who seconded it?
Willand.
Why?
Kaplan, they're going to read on right down to the.
I guess you can call that rule.
Berkowitz.
Yes.
Kaplan.
Yes.
Harik.
Yes.
Ready.
Yes.
Willand.
Yep.
Okay. And bring this to our agenda. Ushasone.
Are you, uh, Ushasone? Raise your right hand, you swear firm testimony about to give before the board's true self you got. And for the record, you're the owner of the subject property. Ma'am, are you going to provide, are you going to provide testimony as well? Could you raise your right hand, you swear firm testimony about to give before the board's true self you got? And for the record, could you state and spell your name?
First name, Kiran, K-I-R-A-N-C.
Okay, and you just live at the home?
I do.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, have a seat, please. One of us want to tell me what, what you want us, what you want to do and why?
Um, I can explain it.
Just talk right till you get the sort of microphone picture up, that's all.
Okay, sounds good.
Thanks.
Okay, so what we're looking to do is legalize our existing driveway and expand it additional 64.9 square feet. So our driveway right now, it's wider at the top and narrower at the bottom because there's a tree at the edge of the driveway that blocks the opening. And this is an issue because we have four cars in the household and only barely three are able to fit in the driveway. And so our fourth car is always parked on the street and it gets really hard to, you know, to get that.
I, we, we heard a lot of this, it was put off for.
It was put off, yeah.
Why do we, why was it put off? Because I was, I was at the meeting and I heard the, I read the, the, the tape, but I don't recall why it was.
Uh, because the notice had to be updated, the legal notice that we sent out.
Oh, okay.
Had to be updated.
Was there anything else, Lori?
No, there had been some confusion between the submission from, you know, to zoning and to the board about that little piece where the tree is. And it wasn't included in one review or the other. And I don't recall about the notice, but this, this was what she was, you know, she was looking to legalize part of her driveway when they bought the house. You know, it was like this, and then they wanted to do this extra little piece for their cars.
So was there a problem?
I thought, Mr. Chairman, the issue was a curb cut too, right? You had to get something with the town on a curb cut.
Right, they have permission from the engineer and from Parks and Forest. They testified to that the last time.
That, that was the issue.
Yeah, that was the issue.
It's a minimum.
That's all said.
I'm sorry, we also have a, an engine, the engineer's report. There was some question about runoff and whether it affected the neighbor or not.
Yeah, so that wouldn't, shouldn't be an issue.
Do you comply with the engineer's report?
Yeah.
And are you asking for any additional curb cut?
Yeah, well, when we, when we expand the driveway in that bottom corner.
We remove the tree and expand driveway.
Yeah.
You don't want a curb cut.
Yeah.
You understand you have to get a permit from the town?
We do, yeah, we spoke with the engineering and they told us. Yeah.
Okay. Did he indicate what he's going to grant you or not?
They did not. They said first to get, come get the approval from you guys, bring that over to them, and then they'll go through the.
That's correct, because they will not be approved by any other department until they have approval from the board.
Okay. And you talked to your neighbor about what you're proposing?
We have, yes.
And what was, what did they say? Does he have any problem with water running off your driveway onto the property?
No, he doesn't.
So just to recap, when you bought the property, the driveway was right to the property line as it shows here.
It was, yes.
And now you just want to extend that down to the street and remove the trees in the way there? So you can get more cars off the street?
Yes.
Okay. Very good, thank you.
Um. How big is the tree?
Oh, I don't have a measurement of it.
Do, do, do you have to get a permit for removing a tree if it's, if it's bigger than certain thickness?
Yeah, we went to Parks and Forestry and they told us that it would give us permission as long as we show the approval from you guys.
So it'd be subject to that approval as well?
Yes.
Okay. Anybody have anything else? Somebody want to make a statement?
Yeah, this is the family needs and they need to expand the driveway to fulfill the family needs. I'm in favor of this application.
Okay. Motion for a resolution?
Yeah, application 21 colon 03, Ushasone for Deerfield Road, block 354, lot 1.02, zone R4. Recommend granting a C variance to legalize the driveway expansion contrary to section 430-275X.
Second ready.
Call a roll.
Jaskowitz.
Yes.
Kaplan.
Yes.
Harik.
Yes.
Ready.
Yes.
Willand.
Yes.
Berkowitz.
Yes. Okay, uh, two weeks, hopefully, you have a lot of resolutions, I don't think I have more. But you should have a resolution in two weeks, pass it. Then you can get a copy and go to the other departments to do what you have to do.
Okay, all right, thank you so much.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Let's see if we show it up.
Have a good night.
Have a good night.
Well, let's see, she's here, very chance. That's the wrong one, it's this one.
Mick? Maura Mick?
Yeah, it is.
M I C K? Is there Maura Mick here?
Maura? All right, you beat me to it. Okay, she's still here and she's still on for October 20th. Okay, next, Ms. Richard Taft.
Sir, you've been previously sworn?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and you understand that you're still under that same oath?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, he's been reaffirmed.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Taft, I, I wasn't here at your meeting, but I did watch it. So I am familiar with the, where we're at. And Mr. Ira Kane is not here tonight, so I'm taking his place, substitute. Uh, I think we left that you were going to consider possibly replacing what's there with a shed?
Sheds.
Sheds?
Yeah, because it's a, it's, it's a 40-foot container. So, uh, without a permit, I can only go 10 by 20, so I'm going to put two 10 by 20 sheds on the property.
And do you know where you're going to put them?
Yes, it's on the diagram that I provided. They're going to go in the back corner of the lot and based on, and set back six feet from the property line plus three inches just to make sure that it's okay. Uh, they will be installed on top of a bed of three-quarter crushed stone.
Okay, are you, are you going to make any, any access to it? Have a path or?
No.
Okay.
It's just going to be for storage of, of the stuff that's already in the container, family memorabilia, some furniture and things like that, and the equipment that are used to maintain the property.
And then the trailer will be removed after you move there again?
After the container, the sheds are constructed, the contents will be transferred over and the container will be removed.
Do we put in a, a timeframe for that?
Not yet.
We can't, we can't, all right?
The, I, and I, I was prepared for that. I talked with the vendor that's going to provide the shed and he says 12 to 16 weeks for, uh, to construct sheds that size.
Is this going to be brought to the site, constructed?
They'll be brought to the site, constructed. I do have to make arrangements to have the area leveled and have the stone put down and that would be separate, but that would be taken care of while I'm waiting for the sheds.
So we, we, the board could stipulate that these would be modular sheds? You're not going to have a little construction crew out there?
No, they won't be, they will, they'll be delivered on the back of a truck and placed on the property.
That's what I just said. Are you going to cut trees down to put this?
No trees will be removed. There'll be some underbrush removed in the back of the property, but no trees.
So it's in the far corner of the property, you're going to store stuff that you're going to use to maintain the property? How are you going to get back and forth to the stuff there? You're not going to have a path, a road of any kind?
I'll walk back there, I walk back there now to the storage container that is there, I walk back there. There is a driveway on the property that's from the original house that I park in and then I just walk to the back of the property.
So no additional construction, no driveway going back, no family put down?
Nothing else. It's already going to cost me $9,000 a piece for the sheds, I can't afford anything else.
Just this is for storage purpose, not to daily move in and out, right?
No, I, bi-weekly at the most. Just to get the equipment and mow the lawn.
There's no electricity to the sheds?
No electricity. I, I will be installing some solar lights just for security purposes, but no electricity or any, any other utilities going back there.
So are these, are these sheds going to stay there forever or what's the plan?
My plan is, is when I can get a house built there, I'll build a house, but the sheds will remain. They'll still be my outbuildings for storage of equipment and what have you. I may convert one of them into like a workshop, but the, the sheds will remain, they won't disappear.
No, if it's a workshop, then the use.
It wouldn't have electricity. It would be just like a place for, you know, doing projects and things that weren't done in the garage or anything like that.
When he puts his house up, those sheds then become good farming.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Can farm it here.
Yeah, because she said she's putting, yeah. Well, doesn't it, don't they be 10 feet off the rear property line?
Uh, I talked to, I forget what his name is in zoning when I was here, dropping the paperwork off, and he said it, it's six and six, is the rule, six feet off the side, six feet off the back.
That's correct.
Okay. The focus here is he needs something to maintain the property,[1723.82] you need something to maintain the property, whether you believe it's rational to have the equipment to maintain the property at the site, make that decision. And then the next decision you make is whether you wanna allow someone to have a storage container on his property for his own personal belongings. You have two, you have two decisions to make.
Uh, they, currently, and I've spoken several times with my bank, is that they'll, they will consider doing a, a new mortgage for a house uh, when I complete the one that I have now, which is, will be in twenty twenty-five.
So minimum, four more years?
Yes.
So at the time of the last hearing, I know I, I was, I had a problem with the fact that the shed was there, with that the container was there. Right, so now we're saying you're gonna have two sheds, which I guess is visually more appealing. They'll be in the back, right, and then at some point in the future, you intend to build a house.
Yes.
So we are saying, we are not happy with the container, and then we're deciding now on, I guess, are the two sheds okay?
Correct.
Okay. But, uh. And I'd like to, if, if and when we vote, I would like to say that this project needs to be done. You say twelve to sixteen weeks, I would say then, let's say it has to be done in five months.
In all the, in all the resolutions, it's a six-month period.
Okay.
And if they don't do it within six months?
Their violation. Okay.
Can you describe what the sheds look like?
Uh, actually, there should, as part of the application, the last page, it will have a, a rendering of the sheds. That, okay.
Peter, does he, does he have to get the permit within six months, or does the job have to be done?
He's gotta build it six months.
He has, okay.
Finish it.
Finished.
There's no building, it is gonna be delivered.
Right, well, I want the project, I don't want this to be a delay tactic, is my point.
Ten months from now, if there's no shed there?
Right.
No, installation completed within six months.
Right, okay.
What's the material, what's the material of the shed?
Uh, it's wooden construction, vinyl siding, and a metal roof.
How close is that metal roof to your neighbor's property?
Uh.
Somebody rephrase that, to the neighbor's house?
Oh, oh, it, his house is towards the front of the lot, so probably eighty feet. I mean, it's, they're, they're big lots, they're very large lots, so he's quite a ways away from it.
Do your neighbors know what your net, your present intention is?
The reason we're here is because of my neighbor.
Do we know if they're here now?
They were sent notice, uh, they didn't show up at the last meeting either.
Is there anybody here who wants to speak in favor of or against this application? Nobody's indicating they're here.
Why did you choose a metal roof and not a shingled roof?
Uh, cost and speed. Uh, less wood, you, they just have to put framing up and then they can put the metal roof on top of it, so it's less wood, it reduces the cost.
It's not under an oak tree or anything, is it?
It's not under any trees.
Uh, just I guess the question, how do you plan on putting the sheds? Is the twenty gonna be towards the front yard?
Towards the front yard, so they'll stick in to the, they'll, they'll, they'll be just like the diagram, uh, the long way. Uh, the doorways will face into the property and the long way will be along the property line. And I chose that location because this side is the Lanedex property, it's considerably lower and it regularly floods because of the, the swamp that Lanedex has back there.
Oh, okay.
And probably will get worse once they construct the, the residential.
Anybody have anything else?
So potentially, this can stay like this forever, with two sheds?
This'll be permanent, once the house is built, the sheds get to stay there.
But even if the house is not built, the sheds stay?
That's correct, yeah, yes.
And as a practical matter, with building is like in this town, I don't think that property's gonna stay making for too long. Maybe three or four years, but not twenty years. Um. Any else, anyone? Somebody wanna make a statement, or you wanna go at the conference, or?
I think Mr. Taft has made a compromise here, a proposal come back to remove the violation of the existing storage unit, which was the complaint file, and has got a solution to it, which looks like putting up new structures to meet his needs and not cause him any more hardship, so I, I think there's a reasonable application, I'll be voting for it.
All right, somebody wanna propose a resolution in favor of the application?
I can do it. Application twenty fifty-three, Richard Taft, seventy-six Alexander Avenue, block three ninety-three, lot twenty, in the R three zone. I recommend that we grant the D variance for a storage container on a property without a primary use.
Second ready?
Call the rule.
No, not for a storage container?
Is there anything else you wanna add to the resolution?
For two, sorry, you're right, for two sheds. Grant, but I guess they're acting as storage, but yeah.
Josh Lewis?
Yes.
Kaplan?
Yes.
Karik?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Willand?
Yes.
Berkowitz?
Yes. Uh, so the, the modified application has been granted for the two sheds. We'll pass the resolution hopefully in two weeks, which time you'll get a copy. Uh, then you'll be able to get the permits for the sheds to be built and go forward.
Thank you very much for your time.
Good luck with everything.
Yep, thank you.
Next case is Karen Olin, ninety-six Lake Shore Drive.
All right, will both of you be providing testimony? Okay, could you raise your right hands, you swear a firm testimony, you're about to give before the board's true self you got? You're Karen Olin, name and your name, sir? Hi, sir. And ma'am, you're the owner of this property?
We're both.
You both are, okay, you can sit and, and put your hand up.
Okay, tell me what you wanna do and why, I guess.
Well, first and.
Maybe before you start, there's a report from the engineer that says there's quite a grade behind your house where you wanna put the pool.
Excuse me, what was that?
Behind your house, the town engineer says there's quite a grade there.
Right.
Slope. Which is the same area you wanna put the pool.
Right, so we will have somebody come in to level out and, uh.
How steep is that, are we talking a drop of five feet from the back of the house to the back property line?
That's way too much, not, not even.
Couple feet?
A feet, two maybe at most, maximum.
Have you had an engineer look at this at all? Or contractor?
We had some contractors coming in and, um, but since we didn't put anything concrete, uh, we didn't discuss much about it, because I mean, the slope is not, um, it's not a major issue, it's really not that much of a slope.
You don't think you're gonna have retaining walls, or things of that order?
None of them.
Because it's so close to the back property line?
There will be six feet off the fence from our neighbor on ninety-eight Lake Shore and the other one facing back of our house.
The ones, the plan says it's eight and a half feet.
I have the application over here, it says. Six foot, yes, from the fence.
Fence?
From the fence, off the fence, yeah. And we'll be getting a ten by eighteen above ground pool.
Did somebody else's survey show six feet?
Mine shows six.
Mine shows six.
Mine does.
Mine should have been half.
Yeah, right here.
Henry?
That'll be the right.
Oh, sorry.
Now, just to that point, though, that's one of the reasons you're here, because it's supposed to be ten feet, no, it's probably not. So, uh, it looks from your plan here, you have room to move it in closer to the house, do you not? More, wait for the property line more, then why not do that? The proposed pool.
I couldn't hear that, I'm sorry.
Okay, so you're here because you're proposing to put the pool within six feet of the property line and fence. The ordinance says it should be ten feet.
Right.
According to the survey here, it looks like you have plenty of room to move it in four feet from the property line. The pool, the pool, so why wouldn't you just move it in and over a little bit, and then you have no problems?
To make it even like ten?
I wanted to have more room towards that side, that's why specifically.
But that's in violation of the proposed ordinance, so if you move it some, it's gonna help the cause here.
So if I move it a little bit, I'm.
Your problem is the board has to have a reason why they grant the variance.
Not just because you want to do it.
And I want to, it doesn't got it. It's supposed to be a hardship, in other words, if the, if the property is built, and so that, you know, the pool's gotta be there, because it's flat and it's not flat anywhere else.
Right.
Or some, some kind of hardship that, you know, that, that's causing you to put the pool in that specific place.
Same conclusion, in order to grant this application, you guys will suggest to put it how, uh, far away from the fence.
To be in compliance with the ordinance, then you wouldn't have, wouldn't have to provide a variance.
Is there a reason why you want that far away from the house?
Uh, aesthetic and, you know. It is flat around that side.
That's a reason.
Yeah.
So it's flatter, further away from the house in the back left corner?
Yeah, it's correct, and I want it further away from the house.
So from the house, in the back, it goes down and then up?
It's kind of like that.
So there's like a swell?
Yeah.
Yeah?
Okay, I, I guess back to the point, you have a nice patio out back. You don't wanna put the pool near to the patio.
No, no, like closer to the house, no, we want it away.
Further away from the house.
On that corner.
I guess, what does semi-in-ground mean?
There'll be, needed to do some digging, um, but I was told by Karen, whoever she spoke to, that we needed to do some extra, uh.
Semi-in-ground, it's a little bit lower level.
On the soil, right?
Uh, the above ground, it's all the way out, it's a little bit deeper.
But if that's gonna be an issue, then we'd rather do the above ground.
Yeah, partially, exactly, partially.
But, uh, how, how deep, usually it is like a five-foot height?
Fifty-two inches, so half of that.
Yeah, like, then if you go in the deep, then what is about the safety?
Right, that's true.
Somebody can jump in.
Yes, for sure, so what I'm saying, if that's gonna be an issue, then we'd rather keep the above-ground pool.
Yeah, it was either or.
Instead of, instead of digging for the soil.
Well, what makes it an in-ground pool or an above-ground pool if part of it is in-ground?
Semi.
Semi.
It's really construction.
Yeah, okay.
Hey, what's the size of the pool again?
Ten by eighteen. Well, the reason why we did this, the application, because of coronavirus, we wanted to go out less and just try to enjoy ourselves, you know, and that was the main point behind it.
Is there any landscaping around your property, or your neighbors?
No.
Just the fence?
Yeah.
Just the. What kind of fence you have there now?
Final, right, I think it's final.
How high? Five feet, six feet?
I, I think it's six feet. I think it's six feet. Well, the, the owners that were there before, they installed that.
Yeah, that was there before.
Before we got, yeah.
Okay, so we, the board needs to consider a variance that you're requesting here.
Yes.
And we're a little confused on the above-ground and ground, but you say, why, why not just have an above-ground pool here, right? Uh, and put it a little closer to the patio, so the genon encroaching on the property is buying some preference of it, a variance, and we have a case closed. Could you be willing to do that?
So how close would it be from, is it gonna be okay to be closer to the house, how many?
Sure.
No, from the property line is ten feet.
Yeah, the property line is the issue, not closeness to your house, from, from our concern of the, of the ordinances for the housing. Correct, Mr. King?
Yes, and, and I, I would think even the ten feet would be better for maintenance, because the six foot's gonna be pretty tight against your fence.
Exactly.
Could we compromise on it?
So you're eliminating the need for the variance?
Yeah.
Yeah.
If, right?
Yeah.
Well, we, they've got reasons for wanting it not to be too close to the house, can we compromise on it?
Yeah, that's the problem, because if you see there's a wall on the side, so then you really have like this much space to go around. Yeah, there's, maybe they're not seen.
Yeah, I think they're seen that. They did an addition there.
Yeah, they did an addition.
Was that the dotted line there, that's a wall?
The bathroom is right here, I don't know if you guys are looking at that, so that's why we decided.
So that, that stripe line is not a patio, it's a?
No, it's a.
No, it's, it's, it's our bathroom in there, that's why. It's an addition, yeah.
That they did previously. That's why.
That's why we decided to push it further away, exactly.
So you can't move it there, because there's a wall.
Yeah, yeah.
Exactly.
Exactly, that's what I'm, maybe we do.
That's why they, they weren't, you guys weren't understanding, yeah.
It looks like that's a patio.
Yeah, it looks like it, yeah.
It's the wall, that's why.
Yeah, it's our bathroom in there.
The perfect spot, it's gonna be flatter, it's gonna have enough space around.
Makes more sense now.
Yeah, to cut the grass as well and.
Yeah, the guy needs to go around and cut the grass for us.
What kind of decking are you planning around this pool?
No, actually, no, that's, we were just gonna put like rods around it.
Because if you do, you can't go any closer to the fence than what's shown on your plan now.
Right, no, we don't have any plans on putting that.
Toward your house.
Yeah.
I know, not, we're not planning on putting it.
How are you gonna get in the pool, assuming it's an above-ground pool?
No, they have a ladder with the log and all that, yeah.
Okay.
With safety.
All right.
Have you considered the pool sideways, like ninety degrees and ten feet from the Seminole Avenue? Maybe that, that may, may not be that close to your wall or. Put it over here, so facing up on David's property, ninety, like sure? Yes, eighteen feet, this is eighteen feet.
Instead of ten by eighteen, it's eighteen with that.
You rotated, you're talking about rotating it this way?
Yeah.
Ninety degrees.
Because the wall is right there as well.
Yeah.
You see it? It'll be close, that's the only way it'll fit, for that specific.
Yeah, I mean, it's just drawn out, so it's not the scale, so.
I mean, everything was, uh, I, I put it there for a purpose, yeah.
We put bricks around it to see, and we did an option.
Well, I, when the pool is in, how, how, how many feet is it gonna be between the pool and the wall?
It's gonna be another six feet also. From the bathroom, yeah, that, that little stretch you guys are seeing, which is our bathroom, you have six, about six feet also.
So moving it all, it's gonna be closer than six.
From each side, yeah, friends, yeah.
So you're moving it to be closer than six feet?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I, I, I see why they put it there. It's either gonna be on that side of the property or the other side, but it's gonna be on that spot.
I think the key statement has been that this is the flatter area in the bathroom.
Yep.
So they're gonna have to comply with all the DEP stuff that's mentioned in that memo?
Yep.
You're aware of Mr. Kaplan's comment in the memo, the DEP stuff, there will be in compliance, right?
Yeah.
And there is a grant?
Yes.
And you're in a hundred-year flat plane?
That won't affect anything.
Do more swimming.
We sure need it after working seven days a week, so.
Anybody in the public wish to speak for or against this application? Nobody's responding, so you don't want to say anything else, right? Anybody wanna, somebody wanna make a comment on this?
Sure, being that it's flatter in the back, it makes more sense to put it back there, you have nobody objecting, so I'll be voting in favor.
Okay, resolution?
Let me make a resolution, application twenty colon twenty-six, Karen Olin, ninety-six Lake Shore Drive, block five thirty-nine, lot eight, zone R dash four, to grant or issue C variance to install semi-ground, semi-in-ground swimming pool contrary to section four thirty dash thirty-five, column nine.
Josh, go second.
Call the rule.
Yes.
Kaplan?
Yes.
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Two weeks, you'll have a resolution, then you'll be able to go ahead and do what you have to do.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Enjoy it.
Have a great evening.
I just wanna mention that, uh, the MIC application is ready to be heard.
Our MIC application is.
The other people will hear from the earlier one.
Earlier application.
Did we carry talk, okay?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Time flies when you have.
Let's go.
There's no one who's here for us.
No, we, yeah, there's no reason not to hear it.
Yeah, there was no one here for.
But I think we should, we take it, I think we should take it last, so.
Yeah.
Uh, there's other people waiting here. Uh, we have April Home See? Or, what, Glenn Ray?
Uh, will, will both of you be providing testimony?
Yes.
Okay, could you raise your right hands, uh, you swear a firm testimony, you're about to give before the board's true self you got?
Yes.
And for the record, you're April Home See, and it's your names? And you're the owners of this subject property?
Yes.
Thank you, you're sworn, you can sit down.
I have, um, memo from the township engineer that did not come early enough for them to get it in the mail, so.
I got it.
Did you get it?
I went to the engineering department and picked it up myself.
Yeah, okay, excellent. Yeah, okay, excellent.
And this is the case that I was talking to the prior applicant about?
I figured.
What, how much of a grade are we talking about?
It's three feet.
That's it?
Yes, so when I, I, just a side note to Nora's point, I, I had to go to get this, I didn't know about it, it was just written up on Friday, so... Um, I just read it over, and I see it says there's some shoulds and maybes, but it's three feet, so I have some paperwork here.
So, three feet from where, from the back of the foundation on the back of the house, down to your back property line?
I believe so, I mean, this, I don't know, this was from our, uh...
From what?
Let's see, this is our pool gentleman that drew this up for us.
Okay.
I don't know, I, this...
Doesn't show any topo on it, though.
No, no, I have a different one that has, like, really small, that he did some, I don't know, if you can see it, it was really hard for me to read, so I had him blow it up with some of the numbers. I didn't bring enough copies, but I have one here if you want to see it.
You mark it as A1?
Well, you mark it in evidence, but then we'd have to keep it.
That's fine.
Okay.
I don't know if that's really what you're looking for, but...
Alright, so...
I don't know, but, good enough, like I said, we just found out about some of this on Friday.
Alright, so basically, A1 is a marked-up survey of, uh, your property with the... This just shows all the calculations.
Yeah, and then there's some arrows.
Coverage.
Yeah.
But there's no, oh yeah, there is.
It's hard to see.
Yeah.
Get your magnifying glasses out.
No, he's got the grids on here, yeah, and it slopes from... He's got the contours on, he's got no elevations, so. It's ten, nine, one foots. So, your property is running from east to west, sort of. If you're looking out your backyard?
Yes.
It's sloping from the right side down to the left side?
No, it slopes from the left down to the right, if I'm looking at my, if I'm standing out the back?
Does?
Yeah, just like standing out of my house.
You're looking at the front door, it slopes.
I'm in the, I'm in the back of your house?
Yes.
Looking to, back of your neighbor?
Yes.
Which is the high side of the property?
The left side.
Okay, so basically, it, it slopes from one side to the other?
Correct.
And it looks like it's been kind of made a little plateau back there where you're proposing the pool. It's kind of flatter there than other sides, or not?
I wouldn't say so.
It's uniformly?
It, it, I don't know the grading, but it does...
Maybe, maybe he altered it. Alright, but there, this plan is, what I'm looking at, A1, it says, map of properties, spots for builders, it's an old survey, whoa!
It's very old.
September twenty-five, sixty-three or sixty-eight?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, and, but it does show, it does show one-foot contours. Your property doesn't have like a saddle in it, does it mean going from, if we look, from the right side, you're looking out the back?
Mm-hmm.
Actually, from the left side, it doesn't slope down and then go back up again?
No.
Okay. So, the reason I ask those questions, if, if, if this was a serious grade, you have to see whether they could actually do it, but that's not what's showing on that plan. Well, are they in fact gonna have to move all this soil?
I did a soil permit too, by the way, on Friday.
He doesn't know all the soil's gonna get moved out. He's just saying it's more than a hundred yards.
It's less than, the soil permit was for sixty?
Oh, really?
Yeah, I submitted it, I think it was Monday.
Okay, okay.
To Tracy.
You're beating compliance with his letter.
Mm-hmm.
What else you want to tell me what you, what you want to do, and why?
So, I think the other thing that, um, came up for the variance was the fence was proposed on the property line, instead of six inches off the property line.
Yeah.
So, I did go to my neighbors behind, I have a notarized letter that they agreed to put on the property line, it's, it's just an un, um, landscaped area, so, um, they agreed, I took pictures to show you what it is.
Is that all the property lines?
Ju, on the back side, not...
Just the back wall?
Yeah, the side already has some fencing, we haven't decided what we're doing there.
You're gonna comply with the pool?
Correct.
It will?
Yes, well, uh, whether we're gonna tie in with theirs or put our own, we're gonna probably put our own, but this is mostly the back, um, was where the problem was, where they said it was on the property line.
Okay.
So...
So, I appreciate that the neighbor is, is doing the right thing?
Yeah.
What happens if he sells the house, and the next person comes along, and they do a survey and realize it's on the property line, could that be a problem? If you give a variance, no. Say again, Peter? If you give a variance, no. Okay.
Why does it have to be on the property line?
Our backyard is shallow, so I had asked, and actually, they, um, just moved in there, and they want to put a fence, so they asked if they could tie into my fence, so they have, uh, a gain as well.
So, you're building their fence real...
Yeah, lucky them, yeah.
I'm looking for a fence, I'm interested.
Let's, let's address the one-and-a-half-foot variance for the setback of the pool. There's no way that you can get eighteen inches adjustment on that configuration.
I'm not sure if I know what you're talking about.
So, it's allowing ten feet, and you're proposing eight-point-five?
The pool, to...
Oh, the pool.
And it goes to the apron. Now, this apron is on the other side of the pool, the, the part of the pool that's next to the house, and I gather where you'd have the tables and whatever.
Sure, yeah.
That backside really just finishes things.
Yeah, it's more of a walkway to get around.
Do you have any idea how wide that is?
Uh, five feet.
Would three feet suffice?
Could we make it four?
About three and a half. About three and a half.
And you don't need a variance.
That, that's a deal, I sound like a great deal.
Okay, so all we need now is a variance for coverage, and that is, the township ordinance classifies water as impervious. This water's looked at a lot of different pools, and we don't, so the dead effect is negligible.
So, John, does that mean when he suggests a...
He, he's telling, we, we, if you feel comfortable with it, you give him a coverage variance?
Yep.
Uh, he'll adjust the plan to not have a, a setback variance for the pool, and the fence variance, uh, he's doing his neighbor a favor.
But he won't, but he won't need the dry well, will he? Is what it is?
He's gonna have to go back and talk to the town engineer.
Okay.
Yeah, if it's, if it's required, I'd love to get it.
Well, 'cause he could say it's a pool impervious, I guess, in his calculation.
I don't know what they do.
Okay.
So, what if, let the applicant go back and talk with him, it seems like he can communicate pretty well.
Are you talking about with the engineer?
Yep.
Yeah, I haven't been in, because I can't get in touch with him.
Explain it.
Yeah.
The, the board has a basic practice of not including water surfaces as impervious.
And we reduced the, not much, but we reduced the impervious coverage?
Correct.
By shrinking that, the back part, so that's probably not an issue anymore.
As I say, and it's so de minimis even, if it didn't, so. Whatever they were asking for, if you feel comfortable with it, I would just...
So, I'm sorry, I just want to make sure, you're telling me I have to go back to the engineer and talk to him now, is that what you said?
Well, the board is probably gonna approve, subject to the town engineer's report, which you've seen, and you, you said okay to that earlier.
That memo that you're talking about?
Yeah.
Yes.
And, uh, so you're gonna agree to, uh, reduce the width of the, uh, apron on the...
Mm-hmm.
The side of the property.
In the back.
Back, backside to three and a half feet.
Yes.
And the fence, uh, will be asking the board to, uh, build a fence for your neighbor.
Yeah, do you want that, um, notarized?
Sure, right, I'm open, make a point.
Uh, A2?
I get A2. And that's it. Anybody else have any questions? Anybody from the public wish to speak in favor of or against this application? Seeing nobody, I guess that's it.
Great.
Somebody want to make a recommendation?
Sure, I think the applicants, uh, presented a very well-informed and articulated, uh, presentation, and they're adhering and will adapt to any changes that need to be made and talk to the engineer, so I will be voting for it.
Okay.
I'll do the resolution.
Good.
Application twenty-one sixteen, April Homsey, four Wood Glen Way, Block 435, Lot 32, in the R3 zone. I recommend that we grant the C variance to construct the shed, irregular-shaped pool, spa, patio around the pool, subject to that change, uh, pad with the pool, well, the change that we discussed. Yes, thank you, um, the pad with the pool, equipment and fences.
Second, ready?
Call roll, please.
Josh, go it.
Yes.
Kaplan?
Yes.
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Willens?
Yes. So, it's been approved, we'll formalize it in two weeks, and, uh, then you'll be able to get your permits.
Wonderful, thank you very much.
Good luck, enjoy.
My kids say thank you too.
Now, they have to be here to testify to that?
Alright, next we have Jonathan Ortiz. Thirty-one Epsekin Road.
Uh, will both of you be testifying? Excuse me, could you raise your right hands? You swear firm? Testimony you're about to give before the board's true help you got, and your name is Jonathan Ortiz, ma'am, your name? And are you the owners of the subject property? Okay, thank you, you're sworn. Who is he?
Uh, Jonathan, my name is Tommy Lee, I'm a father, my father-in-law.
Okay, you raise your right hand, you swear firm testimony you're about to give before the board's true self you got?
Yes, I do.
Uh, and you don't reside at the property, and your testimony will be just as an experienced builder, but really just a, someone who's helping, you know, trying to see if we can get this thing built.
The only proposal here is for the front entrance way and steps, correct?
Yes.
None of the other things that show on the survey are requested. Your driveway encroaches on the adjoining property, right?
It encroaches into Abston Road. It starts with a twenty, what's needed is a twenty-five-foot setback, and...
You gotta come near a microphone.
It, it starts with a twenty, you need a twenty-five-foot setback, you need a twenty-five-foot setback, but when they bought the house, it...
Twenty feet.
It's sweating.
No, I'm not talking about the little driveway on the side, I'm talking about the other one.
The main driveway, lines up, actually, they end at the same point in the street, uh, basically, uh, they line up the same.
Yeah, but it looks like it encroaches on the neighbor also.
Although, it's common, there's two drivers that, you know, touch each other, the neighbors on the west side and their driveway.
Okay.
Yeah, maybe that's what they...
Have any idea how old his houses?
Uh, I don't, I would guess, I would guess over fifty, it's fifty-nine, so...
Town has a rule, the driveways are supposed to be five feet off your property line. Who knows how long this has been?
Right, I'm not really sure. This, this form that was given is absolutely no problem.
Well, you're right, you share it, you come in and...
Yeah.
You go on one side of the fence, he goes on the other.
Yeah.
And you pull out the snow, show the snow. I don't know whether, while these people are here, whether you want to entertain a variance for the driveway as well, because it appears that attorney's doing due diligence, so looking at this, and we've had, what, half a dozen of these in the last year or so? The driveway?
Sharing?
Sharing. I mean, it's there.
It's existing, right?
Yeah, it's all existing, and what we're really talking about, down the, down the road, you sell this house, attorney goes through and reviews it, and says, hey, this driveway's a violation, and makes you come here again to get a variance, well, we're just talking about, so...
I'm sure they would love to have that ability, you know, but I, I, I think their primary concern is they...
Understood.
And it stays a great point, I think they, they just would love to have a front entrance to the house, right now, their, their house...
John, you know its section?
Yes, has no front entrance, that's what the front elevation looks like, the front elevation looks like right now, and really, they just would like...
We have to mark that.
I'm sorry.
Just don't answer any phone calls.
It's not safe, you know, it's not, it's dead, sit down. I, that's why I wanted them there, and I definitely just shut up.
So, you're creating a front entrance to the house?
Yes.
How do you get into the house now?
There's a side door that we parked right by the garage and the thing there, but, I mean, we're the only house on the block without a front entrance, so it kind of, it's kind of weird, I mean, either we crawl out from the tree, like a bunch of creeps are going outside.
What will it lead you to, living room, dining room?
Uh, right now, there's, uh, like a little mudroom in there, but we would have to just, and once you open that front entrance, you see the hole down to the end of the house.
Color and architecture is all the same as the existing all?
Uh, yeah.
Color, architecture will be match up to the existing?
Absolutely, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, anybody on the board have any questions?
No.
Uh, anybody in the public, uh, wish to speak in favor of or against this application? Seeing none, uh, I guess that's it, right?
Yes.
Somebody want to make a comment, or?
Yeah, this is a minimalist request, and it is for the benefit of the family, I'm in favor of it.
You include the driveway?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think we should include the driveway.
What's the verbiage for the driveway?
The variance for, uh, five feet.
Relieve from five feet for driveway as it exists.
So, we're giving them more than they asked for, right? Might want to get one free.
Nice, thank you.
Okay.
It's pretty existing, so it's just now bringing, legalizing doing this to it.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, it'll be subject to the engineer's report, you have to, you have to talk to him. Uh, somebody make a formal motion, uh, for resolution?
Okay. Application twenty-one column eighteen, Jonathan Ortiz, thirty-one Epsekin Road, Block 368, Lot 7, Zone R4, recommend granting a C variance to construct a one-story roof entranceway, landing stairs, and front wall, contrary to Section 430-dash-35, Columns 410, 13, and for relief of the five-foot driveway?
Yeah, along the, yes, property.
Along the property line with the neighbor.
Second, ready?
Josh, go it.
Yes.
Kaplan?
Yep. Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Willens?
Yes.
Sherf, go it.
Yes.
I call your attention, if he hadn't been here, we wouldn't have approved this.
I know, I owe him a burger.
I'm sixty-two years old in November, I went with my father, was an architect for fifty years, he died two years ago, planning board meetings, board adjustments meeting, and I must tell you, this has been probably the happiest day in my life, being able to help my children, and I thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good luck to you.
Bye-bye.
Alright, I understand, uh, Maureen Mick is here. We adjourned you to October twentieth. Come on, come on. Where'd you go? Oh, you're at the courthouse. Alright.
We're here now, so let's go.
I used to work there, but now we're here.
Who, uh, who's gonna provide testimony, both of you?
Me.
Okay, now, could you raise your right hand, you swear firm testimony you're about to give before the board's true self you got?
Yes.
And you're, um, Maureen, Nick, Mickey?
Maureen.
Maureen Mick, and your name, sir?
I'm Martin.
Okay, thank you, you're both sworn.
I'm not a resident of the property.
Okay, you're not an owner of the property?
Not an owner, but I forward this to everything that allows us to be here today, so.
Okay, well, Ms. Mick, why don't you let me know, tell me why you're here and, you know, what the situation is?
So, four years ago, I went to town because I wanted to put a shed on my property, the town said, how big is the shed, I said, ten foot by ten foot, they said, then you don't need a permit, I said, okay, that was the end of it. So, I went, I got the shed, I put it on the property, and, um, in the last three months, the neighbor next to me called the town to say that the shed was not the proper distance from the property line, which, because I was never directed to go to zoning, I didn't know it had to be six feet. which, because I was never directed to go to zoning, I didn't know it had to be six feet off the property line. So, this is a picture of the shed on the property.
Have you marked that A1?
Yeah.
I don't have to admit it. Could be.
I got a pretty nice looking shed.
You see, you offended the chairman already.
Okay, so here, you know, the engineer was out, I showed him pictures of how the foundation was established, leveled, no water runoff problems, and...
Do you want to mark that A2? Do you want, do you have copies of those pictures, ma'am?
I can get more copies.
Well, if you want, if you're gonna show them, they just have to be marked?
If you show them, we have to mark them, and if we mark them, we lose them, keep them for a certain period, certain period of time.
You have to understand, you know, we're gonna keep those.
That's okay. And this photograph shows the neighbor who made this complaint...
Need the microphone.
Here, give me the...
You have to go by the microphone.
He was witness the whole day of the installation of the shed and never had one problem. He came and toured it after it was established.
Let me ask you, when were these pictures taken?
Four years ago.
When the shed was installed?
Correct.
So, do you remember what month?
Uh, September.
Okay, you took them?
Yes.
So September 17?
17, 2017.
Neighbor complained actually participated in the installation.
And his gar, his garage is right on the property line?
Right on the line.
Yep.
And you made it the same color?
Well, that's my house color, too.
It's probably pre-existing.
So it is on a foundation?
Yes.
That's just rare, that's just pressure-treated wood with gravel in it?
Yes.
So it's not a cement foundation?
No.
It's not a poured, um, foundation?
No.
Would that count as a foundation?
No.
I don't, I don't think we have to get into that, probably not, um, but...
So how long has it been there?
Four years.
Have you looked into what would be involved in moving it?
Couldn't imagine it.
There's electricity, there's water, you know, it's... The shed.
Probably weighs a ton.
Well, you could roll across the ground, it's, it's heavy, but it's, it's not, you know, it's... Let me just slide across it, just keep on... You have electricity and plumbing in there?
There's also tree roots on the left side, which is why it was placed on the left.
Yeah, there's a big tree, it looks like it's kind of, that's behind it quite a bit.
What do you use the shed for?
Storage.
Why do you have plumbing?
Well, I wanted water if I was cleaning.
So is it, is there a sink, or is it just a faucet?
No.
Outside faucet? And the electricity's for light?
Yes.
Like a floodlight?
Yeah.
Security light on the top.
Have you talked to your neighbor about this?
Since he brought this, no. This is the real story. The neighbor has no place to put his snow. So for 17 years, or 18 years, I let him put all of his snow on my property, right where you see that fence between, um, and then I planted that area on my property, and I told him, you can't put your snow there anymore, because you're killing my plants. And right on the other side of his driveway, he has a fence. And he said, well, where am I gonna put my snow? And I said, well, you're gonna have to take down your fence. And he said, well, I'm not gonna do that. And I said, well, don't, you can't keep killing my plants. And I mean, you know the snow we've had in the last several years? His snow blower's got the mounds up like this, because there's a, um, a metal fence, so it goes through it onto my property. On the other side, his fence is solid, it's wood, so he has no place to put his snow. But that's because he didn't plan for it when he redid his house 19 years ago. So this is why after four years, he's not.
Isn't his garage supposed to be 19 years ago?
19 years ago.
Property of?
Yeah.
I mean, his garage is supposed to be 60 from the property line, but it looks like it's right on the property line.
Correct.
It's supposed to be 10.
I had mentioned that to someone, and they said, it's probably grandfather.
Not 19.
Well, I know.
And he's not here to...
Nope.
Do you know about how far away yours shed is from the property line?
Two feet.
Two feet, and the back is?
Six.
Quite a bit more, it's six, so, alright.
So if, I mean, if I had known I had to go to zoning and I could have moved...
You could have done it correctly, right.
Done things correctly.
Someone will move your shed like he moves his garage. Anybody have any more, any questions?
Nope.
Anybody here to speak in favor of or against this application? Seeing no one, uh, I guess that's, that's it, that's all you have, right? Somebody want to talk about this? Neighborhood dispute?
I think it's the minimus in nature, it's legalizing something that's there. Sounds like she got bad information from the town, so I'm gonna vote to approve it.
Okay, anybody have anything else to say, or else give me a motion to, uh, to a resolution? Somebody want to make a motion?
Application number, nope, I gotta find the other, thank you. Well, I gotta find the whole thing, because it was from the other meeting.
2139.
Yeah, well, I gotta know what I'm reading. Thank you. Application number 2139, Maura Mick, 6 Epsekin Road, block 366, lot 2, in the R4 zone. I recommend that we grant the C variance to legalize an existing shed contrary to section 430 dash 10C.
Second, Josh Boyk.
Okay, and call a roll, please.
Josh Boyk?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Horry?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Willen?
Yes.
Yes. Your variance is granted, your shed can stay.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
You'll have a formal resolution in two weeks.
Then it can stay again.
To wave at your neighbor.
Alright, thank you all very much.
Have a good night.
Good luck. Good speed, Bernie.
Bernie, you're hired.
I didn't do anything, I just listened to the people.
Today, I almost took ten applications.
Now let us go.
We have a motion to adjourn? Hi.
Who was the letter we had?
No.
Good night, gentlemen, I'm David, I...
Yes.
What happened to Brixmore?